This is the Library Board of Trustees Franklin Township. It's Wednesday, October 25th, 2017. There is a quorum present, and so we shall stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll call the roll. Agnes Kula Bagna, not here. Iris Kislin, not here. Tom Lennon.
Present.
Nicholas Champa, I'm here. Ed Ward, not here. John Clyde.
I'm here.
NBC?
I'm here.
And Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Okay. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, commonly known as the Sunshine Law. The schedule and notification of this meeting have been provided to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, and the Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have been posted in the library's vestibule and are also available at the reference We'd like to open this now to the public portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now in public session. Is there anyone who would like to?
I haven't heard anything to speak about, so I'll defer.
Well, we have one member of the public who has recently retired from the Woodbridge Library. Seeing no comments from the public, is there a motion to exit the public portion?
Close public session.
Seconded. Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Meeting is back to... Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from September 27. I think everybody got a copy. Is there any question about the minutes, or?
So reviewed.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes? NBC?
Seconded.
Seconded. Those in favor? Aye.
Abstention.
Those opposed?
Abstention because I wasn't here.
Abstain? The minutes are accepted with one abstention. We'll now hear our director's reports. First, the financial report. I think you've probably all had a chance to look over the three sheets on the financial Seeing no questions, I think we'll move on to the program reports.
We had eighty-four programs, and we had 1,372 people. I'd like to particularly point out the Manhattan Short Film Festival that we had, that we got 110 viewers over the showings. And this was something very different for us to do, and we were a little curious as how it was going to turn out, but it turned out very well, and it was popular. So we're pleased that we did it. Staff members have been going to back-to-school nights. They've been to all the schools. They get to speak to families and students. They tell them about the library and everything we can do. And those were just the things I wanted to highlight from what I wrote. I don't have anything to add to it.
January, I just have one minor question.
Sure.
STPL teen CI-NA.
Oh, the teen?
What is that? What does that refer to?
That's a digital magazine that the teens are going to...
Ah, okay. Gotcha.
Yes.
Thank you.
I was very impressed by the director's report.
Any other comments or questions about the director's report? Seeing none, we'll move right along. Next item on the agenda is the president's report. There will be no president's report at this time. I will have something to talk about in executive session. Is there any correspondence or communications?
None, Mr. Monk.
We're really moving through here.
That's okay.
Is there any old business?
We have to be very careful about what we're going to talk about in executive session. Some of it is privileged, but I'm worried that we will lapse into discussion that is not privileged. So, no secret that we are working on a southern branch, and no secret that we want the youth center that council is planning to build to include a northern branch. Negotiations for property for the southern branch and with the council for the northern branch certainly belong in executive session.
As they will.
Right. I guess, are we going to be just... Let me see the agenda for a second.
Well, the agenda... The agenda at the moment assesses property negotiation.
Right. In executive session. But I guess one thing, you know, we're going to talk... I know that we're going to talk about certain financials about a certain property, and I know we're going to talk about certain financials for the northern branch. At least, I assume that's what we're going to talk about, because I know those are condensing, for lack of a better word, into at least numbers we can start to talk about. One thing I want to talk about, and I think it's more of an open session thing, is given those numbers, which haven't been discussed yet, do we have the financial capability to do the southern branch? I mean, do we have the business plan to do the southern and northern branch? So not only build the buildings, we'll build one building, but furnish both buildings, have people to run the buildings, you know, maybe basically have the cash flow to do both of these branches. I think certainly before we were to buy property, we would want to make sure we are able to do that. And I don't know if, you know, it's hard to discuss one without the executive session information, but I also don't think in executive session we should be discussing all of that because the public has a right to know that part. See, there's limited reasons you can go into executive session. One of them is negotiation. So certainly negotiations with the council for the northern branch and a property owner for the southern branch, that's absolutely appropriate for executive session. But discussing a business plan is not executive session material. I cannot think of a category under which it would go under executive session. So, and I bring all this up because driving here, I envisioned how this executive session's going to go, and I saw it going that way into discussing business plan. And I don't... It is not convenient to separate them. So I think maybe what we should do is have the executive session discuss the monies that might be covered during the executive session, and then be prepared to come out into general session to discuss business plan. Does that sound reasonable, Mr. President?
After executive session, I don't see any reason why the... Why an item cannot be added to the agenda. This does say on the very top preliminary agenda. So that means to me that any board member can bring up a new subject to discuss. And during executive session, certainly if any of us go into an area where any other of us feel we shouldn't be going, speak up, and I think that's the best I can do at the moment.
Sure.
I didn't anticipate discussion of a general business plan.
I had three questions, which I think maybe what I'll do is I'll ask them now, and I'll defer if anybody says haul that off until after the executive session. My first question is, is what is the amount of surplus funds that the library board currently has? Do we have money sitting in some sort of surplus account? How much it could be?
We do, but that's absolutely public information.
Yes. So that... You want me to ask that? Answer it and answer it.
Why don't you ask question three?
Okay. The second one is with regards to staffing. Would we be pretty much able to replicate what is currently spent on staffing and furnishings for the current Franklin Park branch in the new branch? It's just a question of moving staff and materials from one branch to the other. And the third branch, and this is maybe more a council question for the city council, is has there been thought given to perhaps making use of the facilities across Franklin Boulevard in Hillcrest School, Franklin Middle School, you know, for nighttime? To use those existing facilities for the southern or for the northern community center?
So, I can answer... I guess I can answer that. Land has already been purchased and a building demolished for the youth center.
Okay.
Was that... Those properties ever discussed? They were, but this is the direction we went. One thing is, while it's only a few blocks away, it's a few blocks closer to the population in need, although they do walk to school, but... Yeah.
Okay.
There are any... If there are no other of those other two questions yet?
Yes, there is a surplus. It's $5 million. It's been set aside for a building for the southern branch. And staffing, we wouldn't be replicating the Franklin Park branch exactly because the northern branch would be smaller.
Oh.
Oh, yes.
No, but I think he's asking the new southern branch versus the current southern branch.
Okay. Yeah, we'd be able to move the staff and certainly the current furnishings and everything that's there. We'd have to add to it a little bit because it's going to be a bigger space.
Okay.
But yes, that's what we've been doing.
Okay. Thank you, January.
But at some point, we're going to need to really take pen to paper and look at all those costs and the cost of moving. And how much... How much do we add to surplus per year? So in other words, how much excess money do we have per year? Is that going to be enough to fund the northern branch and anything additional in the southern branch? And a little bit of extra money so that we're not living paycheck to paycheck, et cetera. So all I'm saying is before we... I mean, the northern branch, clearly, we can afford by itself if we didn't change with the southern branch. But before we jump into the southern branch and purchase property, we need to really know that we can afford not just to purchase the property and build the building, but to operate three branches.
Hard to argue with that. However, it's also very difficult to, at the moment, put hard numbers on all of those pieces. One thing is, we don't know what the total cost of our replacement southern branch is going to be because we haven't even purchased the land yet. We haven't even agreed on an exact price to purchase the land. And after we purchase the land, we have to go to an architect, and at that point, we'll get a much better idea of what the building costs will be.
Right. But right now, so I have learned recently, at least the number that they are using for the youth center is $400.
$400, yes.
A square foot. So we know our square footage. We can make a ballpark estimate.
We can.
And we then can do something similar for the northern branch, et cetera. So we have numbers to work with. They are not final numbers, but they are numbers to work with to see if, oh my God, we can't afford this, or yeah, looks like we might be able to.
So... As you recall, the reason for moving away from our rented southern branch is to free up operating money that hopefully will help us enable the northern branch. So unfortunately, it's a sequence of events and very difficult to make exact predictions. But I do certainly agree that we can't jump into a northern branch if we don't know that we'll be able to staff it. I'm not worried about constructing it, but the ongoing, the next five, 10, 20 years, it must be staffed, and that's what...
So I mainly... I wanted to have this, that discussion in open session because I felt like it needed to be discussed, and I felt like after we talk about the numbers I expect to hear in closed session, it would be natural to discuss those things. But it wouldn't be appropriate to discuss it in closed session. You see my dilemma. So now it's been discussed in open session, so we're free to proceed, in my eyes.
Okay.
With transparency.
Okay. So we are at old business, I guess, and is there any other old business? Can we move on to new business? There's a proposed holiday closing schedule for 2018. January, would you like to make any comments?
What I've done is I've put the current holiday closings for 2017 on the left, and the 2018 one's on the right, so you can see that it's actually the same holidays. The days of the week change a little bit as the holidays move around, and that's basically it. Placeholder just means it holds a place for those holidays that sometimes fall on the weekend, so the legal holiday comes during the week. This year, there aren't... 2018, there aren't any, so it just says placeholders, just so the column stays steady.
Is there any comment on which holidays we have, which holidays we don't have, or anything else of the sort?
So it's interesting, unless I'm... Well, I guess the two religious holidays we close for are Good Friday and Christmas. We don't close for the Jewish holidays or Muslim holidays, or then obviously for the hundreds of other religions out there. That discussion has come up about schools as to what's appropriate to call for, but I guess that's a different situation. You have programs going on, education going on. If you don't close and someone's observing their holiday, they're missing it. Here, you're more or less, in a way, closing for staff's benefit.
I guess you could say that.
I mean, because if someone wants to come on Christmas, you know...
Yeah.
It's not, you know, it's not, oh, we need to close on Christmas so people won't miss what's going on in the library. So then I do notice some of your staff here are Asian. I don't know... I don't know what their religious persuasions are, so I'm being politically correct here. Should we be thinking broader or not? And that's a really debatable question. I'm looking at you, January, only because I really think this is your bailiwick.
Well, I was talking to Nick about this before. Once you start...
Yeah.
There's a lot of religious holidays.
Yep. There's a lot of religions out there.
Ask me.
And I've always been very...
At least, I know. In my country, there's 18 different religions.
Are these two religious holidays that are on here, basically Good Friday and Christmas? Are they federal holidays? I don't...
Some of them are. Some of them are.
Is Good Friday federal holiday?
Christmas must be.
Yeah.
And one was for Kenny.
I don't know about... I think Good Friday. I know it's state holiday.
And it was a religious one.
For state workers.
Can't... Well, I know I don't get it off at work, so I don't know how that bears on whether it's...
We seem to be modeling on what the state holidays are, with the exception of Columbus Day.
Yeah, that's... I think that's what it was originally based on, was the state holidays.
If you'd like, I'd be happy to supply that or email you what the hospital observes as holidays. There are certain ones, and the reason why I just bring up hospital is because they have such a diverse population within the institution.
Yes.
That they're very sensitive to the percentages and to the people that are employed there. And I think this is where we're addressing for our employees, because if you were to say this, well, these are holidays, that's when someone would like to use the library because they're often... They're not at work, but we want to respect our employees as well. So if you'd like, I'd be happy to supply that list, and we can use it as a binding rod to look at our dates.
Well, what occurs to me is that is Mayor Kramer's point, that the purpose of having holidays that respect a person's religion is more for the staff here. Is there a staff policy that provides that people can take off?
Yes.
A religious holiday of their own?
Yes.
Okay. So as far as that part of it?
They can take it as a vacation day or a personal day.
Personal day.
Right, but they then lose that vacation day. Personal day.
Yes.
So one could argue the Christian doesn't have to do that, but the Muslim or Jew does.
Yes, we do have.
You're right.
I'm Greek Orthodox. I'm Christian.
Right.
My daughter is not with the Catholic Church.
And...
And I don't argue with that.
Right, yeah, I know. And that's the difficulty.
I keep on the same schedule, that's all.
Excuse me again. That's the difficulty of this situation. Yeah.
Every four, five years, we have Easter together, not always.
Yeah.
So I brought it up, and I will...
That's why we don't play with that.
I will yield to your leadership.
Oh, yeah.
How many personal days is one permitted here?
If you're full-time, you get two.
Two.
Just... I'll just throw it on out. Many corporations, and I'm not speaking for the hospital right now, everything's offered in... It's called PTO. Everyone gets a... You have a bank. It's your sick, your vacation, your holidays, and that's what's fiscally decided upon as to what the corporation or the business can afford, and people can use them any way they want, for whatever holiday they want.
To be honest with you, I don't like PTO. I think it leads to abuse of sick time. I think sick time is when you're sick.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, we have a proposed holiday closing schedule. There's been no motion, and yet we've already discussed it, which would usually follow a motion. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion with regard to this proposed holiday
Is this the same to the township, Mayor, to your knowledge? I don't know if you... I wouldn't expect you necessarily to know that. I know the library's a little different.
Well, obviously, the weekend...
Yeah, the Saturday.
Yes, we're different because we're open seven days a week.
Right. But with the exception of that, it appears...
Ninety-nine percent.
Yeah, I don't see... I don't see anything here that... I think that... Oh, I think we do get Columbus Day at the township, and we get Election Day.
Well...
I'm thinking... Well, and the holidays are all contractual. It's all negotiated.
Well, this is not union. It's not unionized here.
It's not unionized, okay?
But it's part of the personnel manual. It's in the personnel manual, the number of holidays.
I mean, I'm tempted to say maybe an additional personal day that can be used to accommodate this, but instead, I'm going to move to approve this as drafted for this.
One second. May I approve it?
There's a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded.
Yes.
We should discuss it, although in fact, we already have.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion on this motion?
I can be talked out of my position. I'm on the edge, kind of.
Seeing no further discussion, I would like to call the question. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed?
I don't have a vote.
Motion passes.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
I think that's reasonable. I just think it needed to be discussed.
Yeah.
And I apologize for my abuse of Robert's Rules. I should have waited till the motion.
Correct.
Since I'm such a stickler at council meetings about it.
That wasn't your fault. That was the leader's fault. My bad. Continuing education for trustees?
The older members know this. The newer members may not. There is a requirement that board of trustee members fulfill continuing education requirements of seven hours a year for the whole board. And I've been looking all year, trying to find decent videos or whatever that you could view to get these seven hours in. The good part about the... The bad part about the law is that if you don't fulfill the requirement, we don't get our state aid. The good part is it's up to the library to decide how you're going to fulfill the continuing education. So what I've started... I did this... Actually, Nick did one earlier this year when he sent out the Robert Rules. That was one article, and I am going to allow everybody five minutes to read it, and we'll count up as the number of board members. Now, this time, I sent out two articles and a glossary of library acronyms and terms. And again, I would expect that each person would spend about five minutes reading each one, and then if anybody wants to discuss either... Any of these, we can do that, too, and that'll add up towards our total. If anybody has been to a library, or I think Iris goes sometime, or has done anything outside of the meetings connected with libraries, you should let me know because I would count that in. And I will keep looking for the next two meetings to try and find some sort of an educational video that you can watch, but otherwise, I'll just... I'll find more articles that'll count towards the total. And again, seven hours for the entire board.
Doesn't sound very onerous, except that glossary was... There were a lot of terms in that.
What didn't you like? The glossary has some outdated terms in it, but I thought it would be useful, some stuff.
Yeah, there's...
Yes.
I enjoyed laughing at some.
I took a tour of the Bar Harbor, Maine library prior to hearing a speech from Senator Angus King.
This year?
This year.
Oh, that's great.
Ten minutes.
I had some things else.
I'll make it fifteen.
And how long do you think you were there?
Well, I don't think it would be fair. I was there for Senator King's speech and talk. I was there for probably about an hour and a half.
Did you tour the library at all? Did you tour the library at all?
Yeah.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. Tour of the library probably took 15 minutes.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Certainly it's good to learn as much as we can about libraries and the, the state library has a website with lots of information and I'd encourage you all to look into that.
January, what about the time I spent with you getting oriented? I had an orientation with you.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Okay. It was probably a half hour.
Forgot about that, thank you.
Tom's doing his part.
I'm going to go down to the Franklin Park branch and tour that.
Yeah, let me know if you do.
Okay.
And if anybody else knew wants to have an orientation on Tom.
Yeah.
You certainly can, or the mayor, you've never had a tour.
Never.
You certainly will, and let me know, I'd be happy to do it.
Next item on the agenda calls for going into executive session. And this preliminary agenda says property negotiation. There will also be anticipated discussion about another branch, an additional branch.
Northern, I think we can say northern branch.
Northern branch, negotiation.
I'll be late. Take care.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to come out of executive?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are now in regular session.
I would make a couple of independent motions. Number one, that we seek a cost analysis of operating costs for possibility of having three library branches, the branch we're currently in, the main branch, a new southern branch, and a possible northern branch in conjunction with a proposed Franklin Youth Community Center. That's number one. I'll do them separately.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone who would like to second that motion? That motion is seconded.
Aye.
Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing no discussion, I, I would, I would solicit some discussion from January, our director. Does this sound like something that we have enough information to proceed with?
Yes and no. The answer, the answer on the, the cost analysis on the northern branch depends on how many hours it's going to be open. That changes everything.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I can do it. I guess I could do it a couple of ways. Do it with.
Yeah.
Different hours and see how it comes out.
You're talking about the possible need for more evening hours?
The opening.
Oh, I'm talking about the possible need that maybe it wouldn't be open. This building is open, I can't remember, 61 hours a week, that it would be open less hours than that, because this is open four, four nights a week in the weekends. Even the southern branch isn't open that often. The southern branch is Monday through Thursday and Saturday. So I could do it, I could do one based on that, the same as that, with two evenings and half a day on Saturday. Or I could do another one with even less hours, scaled down version.
Yes, that, that sounds.
That would be, that would be great.
Is there any other discussion on this? I'll call, they're all in favor of passing John's motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. This motion is passed. Are there any other motions? John?
Oh, I didn't do the appraisal. I moved that we seek an appraisal on the proposed property that was discussed in executive session for a southern branch.
I will second that. In discussion, I would suggest that we ask Bob Vornlocker, who's the most appropriate appraiser to do this job, and also that we do it in a pretty quick timeframe.
I would, I would also note, and I think we can do this without violating the executive session, that this method of procedure was proposed by the township manager, Mr. Vornlocker, consistent with township policies.
Yes, I agree. Okay. Is there any other discussion on this motion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? No.
And then the final motion.
Okay.
At the request of the distinguished and honorable mayor of Franklin Township in order to address these issues, it's good with everybody else, a special library board meeting to be scheduled for, what did he say, November?
Nine.
Don't say that.
Is that okay with everybody?
That's a.
We have one already.
Sixteenth.
Yeah. Too much.
You just want to stick with the 15th? I can withdraw.
I'm sorry, he keeps saying the 16th, 15th. It's three weeks from today.
Yeah, stick with the 15th.
Fifteenth is good.
Hasn't been seconded, so you don't have to withdraw.
Good.
So we will confirm then that the next meeting date is November 15th. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Before we do, does the board want me to call Bob Vornlocker tomorrow and ask him for the name of an appraiser?
Yes, yes. Or, or if you wish, I can do that.
You want to do it?
Yes, I'll do that.
That's okay. Does somebody, me or somebody else, want to call the Realtor and let them know what's happening, that we're going to have an appraisal done first?
You can do that. Make contact with them.
Okay.
Yes, since you were in on the conference call, I think you should do that. But I, I will contact.
You'll do Bob, I'll do the other one. Okay, okay.
I'll come maybe see him in person tomorrow.
Okay.
And is there a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, please. I'm running a little bit late, I have to ski.
What's your?
It's a quarter to seven.
Exactly.
What's scheduled for this room?
Probably nothing. The mornings are usually open.
Okay, so can I just?
Thank you.
Finish this.
Yes, just come and get the key. Ask, ask them at the refines desk for the key.
Were you in his line?
And then you can just come into it.
Okay.
I don't think there's anybody in the room.
Okay. Oh, we have to turn this over.
So let me tell you a quick little story. So we discovered the home and we were talking about.